To our city council meeting, or your city council meeting, Madam Clerk, could you please do roll call?
Sure. Mr. Boson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Mr. Foyce did let us know he wouldn't be in attendance today, so his absence is felt and noted. Could you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you so much. This pledge will be led by Ward Two Councilmember Dave Boson, who's back with us.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can I have another sheet? Can't seem to find.
Mr. Boson.
Excuse me?
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as well as the minutes of the November 4th, 2024 council regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda and minutes. The first item on the agenda, I would like to ask Todd Deerfield to join me and I, for a presentation, who do we have with us, sir?
Bridget.
Hello?
Okay. Wanting it to magnify, but it doesn't.
Anytime you stand up and you talk to us and you have a check, it's multiple.
Bridget and Finance and I were notified a few weeks ago by the estate of Donna Bartley Reed, and we were notified that Leisure Services was a beneficiary of that estate. And today, we have with us Kathy Narum of California and Anne Fagan of Wisconsin, daughters of Donna, to present this check and say a few words.
Thank you. Well, Mayor, city council members, staff, community members, thank you for having us. As you said, my name is Kathy Reed Narum, and I'm here with my sister, Anne Reed Narum. And our mother, Donna Bartley Reed, passed away earlier this year at the young age of almost 98. She was born here, grew up here, and, you know, her heart was always here, even though after she married, she, they moved, you know, my parents moved around the country and eventually settled in the San Francisco Bay Area. So as we grew up, and I should mention, brother was not able to join us, we would always come back to Waterloo where her parents, our grandparents, still lived, and usually for a couple of weeks during the summer. And as you can imagine, three young kids, you know, we wanted to do things. Well, what did we do? We went and we enjoyed the Waterloo Parks. And we have, you know, lots of fond memories of them. Probably the most notable one was cooking hot dogs in a teepee at one of the parks. And so as my parents, in particular, my mom, as they did their estate planning, my mother was very intentional that she wanted to give back to the city of Waterloo, and in particular, the Parks Department, I guess the Leisure Department, and get back in recognition of how much enjoyment that her, she and the three kids had from the parks. And so she made this gift, or wanted to make this gift, with the idea that either you would use it to renovate one of your parks, or add some more cool play equipment for children. And it would be her way of, you know, thanking the city, and she never lost her roots from, even though she moved, her home was here, her heart was here. And so this, she wanted to do this. And so we appreciate it.
Is it, is it possible to get our board members to come up for this shot? And JB, our Park Superintendent? Come on, Tom. And Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you. You have some words? We really appreciate this very generous and incredible gift that your mother has planned for the city of Waterloo. And we have some, some playgrounds in some, in some dire need of replacement, and this will go a long ways towards that. So thank you for traveling this long ways and, and presenting us with this, this check. Very appreciative.
And we just want to thank you and your family for your support. This is an incredible gift, and, and it really shows that your mom, your family's heart is within this community, no pun intended. But I just want to say, what a tremendous blessing that's going to be able to bless children and a little bit older for many years to come. So thank you so much, and let us know if there's anything that we can do for you as well.
I should mention, I actually was born in Waterloo, too.
All right, absolutely.
Although I don't think I lived very long here.
Well, we tried to do something about the rain for you today. We couldn't pull it off.
It wasn't snow.
Right. But God bless you, and thank you so much for doing this tremendous honor. All right, thank you.
We do have some houses that are really neat about breeding. What a generous gift.
Yes, yes, yes.
Very cool.
It is now time for public comments. Your opportunity to address the council on non-agenda related items, and, yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Potter. My office is 1416 West Fourth. I'm a trustee for the Grouse Museum. And I have to say that as far as Church Road goes, we are very, very pleased to have this gift for the park. We are just now working on, we're, a park called Elks Park that we didn't even know was the name of the park, and so our neighborhood is really working to make that happen. And the city did give us some money for that, and we're appreciative. The best part tonight is that you all have a little red paper, and that tells you about Christmas at Russell Square. As you will remember, Grouse is very, very much needing participation and funds. We have, some of our levy money is not there, some of our grant money is not there, so we are looking for ways to develop happiness and eagerness to give us a little help. This is going to take place on December 7th from 5:00 till 8:00 PM, and it will be at our two historic houses. And as you read on here, it's $15 for an adult. Now, there's not a person here that can't afford that, so I don't want to hear anything like that. But if you don't have the money for it, look me up and I'll try to help you out. We do would like to have it pre-registered. You can also register at the door. There will be music, there will be cookies, and cocoa, and wassail, and all these good things. So please put this on your calendar. I know that if some of you don't think you can attend, most of you have contacts somewhere. If you could just take this and post it somewhere, if you do nothing other than post it, then if a few people would look at it, they could say, oh, that really sounds like a lot of fun, and we'll do it. We're also looking for sponsorships. If you'd like to sponsor a child for something along the Christmas lines, we're, we're hoping you'll do that, too. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I want to start with the same thing I started with last time, and that is the 13th Amendment of abolish slavery. And when I'm not getting due process or my constitutional rights.
The mic, can you?
Or my constitutional rights that I'm afforded, that is a form of slavery. I noticed that we had a couple flyers that went around town, which are really nothing, but there was a lot of energy put into the flyers, which is just an invitation to join a group, basically is what it is, whether it's a hate group, a love group, the NAACP, or the Boy Scouts. It's a flyer. But when I've been coming to the council for over the last seven or eight years with threatening text messages to kill my children and myself and grandchildren, and refer to a case that goes back into case 9914612, where the person stuck his finger in my daughter's vagina with the threats, I'm telling you what happened, because this, I think about it every day, Mayor. So you can take it easy with it. I understand your feelings, but I think about this 24/7. 3:00 in the morning when I wake up, I have to go to the bathroom, it's on my mind. So it's more deeper than you. Another thing was, was the, is the fact that you have not done anything to investigate the text messages. And I thought about the other day with the Anne Frank play that was over in Michigan, where the neo-Nazis rode through and had the people scared to come outside. I have a daughter that because of that case, 9914612, is scared to communicate with her father. That's been going on over 12 years. That's not something I'm guessing, that's what she told me, that they done told me, if I keep communicating with you, they're going to make it worse on me after that event. So I will not even attempt to reach out to her on the phone, but I text my daughter two or three times every day. Okay? So this is what I'm going through when I say what happened to my daughter. Another thing is, when Hy-Vee closed up on 63, you said, thank God for all in groceries. And I can understand why you said that, because we had a grocery store there. But when I looked at Donald Trump winning the presidency, and when that man said he was going to prosecute prosecutors, judges, mayors, generals, I said, thank God for Donald Trump. And I hope he come here and do some prosecuting, because this is absolutely ridiculous, what's been done to me and my children. And it's real nice when people can give money away or farmland. They took 109 acres from me. That's what's happening here.
David Driver, 3145 West Fourth Street. I'm a member of the Advanced Waterloo Committee, and it is a small group of people calling to change the government in the city of Waterloo from a mayor council to a council manager/mayor situation. And what we want to do is get more information out so that people of Waterloo can understand what we're talking about. It would require a change of government in the city. Only one other city in the state of Iowa has the same government as we do, with a mayor council. The rest of them have a council manager/mayor government. So we would need to get the citizens behind us to get this done. I will be in the hallway with some information about this, so if you're interested, stop and see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Wow, that's a lot to unpack. Ryan Madison, 1320 East Fourth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. For those who don't know, that is the address for the African American Historical Culture Museum in Waterloo. Less than a month ago, a new board was formed, and I was given the privilege to be called the chairperson. Within that time, we have created a goal of being transparent, and as well as, we have achieved quite a bit significant things in a short period of time that we've been aboard. From, we created a website that houses oral stories from African Americans from the past. We also created a Facebook page to engage with the community. We also have also reached out to 200 business, community leaders, and as well as the council and the mayor, want to introduce ourselves and to chart a sustainable path forward, and as well as, of course, to ask for money. We're still waiting to hear from you guys. Lastly, due to a kind donation, we were able to secure a historical schoolhouse that we plan to move to the museum site to act as the new museum. 28 years ago, 19 individuals, I can only imagine, were sitting in the basement of a church or cramped living room to discuss collaborating and come together with the little resources they have to create something that would preserve and protect the stories of young African American men and women that sacrificed a lot to trench from the South to this place called Waterloo, Iowa, to call it a home for a part of the American dream. I can only imagine what they went through. I wasn't there, but their story is housed in the museum. Ms. Wilder, you and I and everyone in this chamber and outside this chamber stand on those shoulders, regardless of the race, color of your skin, you stand on their shoulders. 28 years ago, 19 individuals. Saturday, I was sending out emails celebrating the accomplishment my board of four have made in such a short period of time, to come to the museum on Sunday to be greeted with a letter that had been sent to the wrong address of a foreclosure notice due to a $17,000 assessment that the city had placed on the property. I cannot debate or deny that, because I was not here. Only thing I can do is plead with the council to give us an opportunity to pay it, because we do want to pay it, because we want to chart a path forward. And if that falls on deaf ears, my next request would be to put those 19 names in record, so that their history doesn't go in vain. 28 years ago, 19 individuals. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And if I could, for the record, put those individual names. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Latonya Graves, 607 East Donald Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I'd just like to thank the mayor and council for all you doing for Waterloo and the award that we just received last week in regards to technology. And so again, you're doing great work, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to comment so we can close oral presentations? All right, council. Anyone?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to share a couple of things. We have our Ward Four meeting on Thursday at 6:00 at the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. Invite all of you to attend. We have some really exciting things that we're doing. We're going to be meeting with, of course, Mr. Anderson regarding the St. Mary's property. We're excited about the community, community having input on that project and a host of other things that we're doing. So come, we have cookies and water as well. So if you want cookies, come. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a quick reminder, I'm back. I'm glad I still have gout, but at least I'm here now. So I'm glad to be back in person with everybody. The final Saturday of the month, I will continue with my normal office hours. I know that's the week of Thanksgiving. I might be a little bit bigger that week after having two Thanksgivings that week, but please come. It's at noon on Ridgeway Side, at the Ridgeway Sidecar. So Ward One, if you have a question, if you want some updates about what's going on in the city or in the ward, please join us. Again, it's just, you can come for five minutes, ask a question and leave. It's just open office hours. There's no expectation for you to stay the whole time, but I would love to have more people come and learn more about the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I, a couple, almost two weeks ago, I was proud to hook up to Waterloo Fiber. It's amazing. I, if you have the opportunity to hook up, I highly recommend it. But because I hooked up to Waterloo Fiber, I had to give up my Mediacom phone, which was my council phone. So you'll notice on the, on the council website that all I have listed is my email address, because I won't have a Waterloo Fiber phone probably until sometime next spring. So if you need to get ahold of me, please reach out via email, and tell, we start rolling out the phone and TV and everything else with the fiber, but highly recommend it. It is incredible.
Mr. Mayor, I want to second that. I was able to hook up a week or two ago, and it is absolutely amazing. Great things happening in this city, so thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Boson.
All right, anyone else? Yes.
And then, again, I just want to remind everyone, the Ward Three meeting is at the Waterloo Public Library, the last Sunday of the month at 4:00 PM. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. And I kind of want to ask John what gout feels like. He keeps saying it, but what does gout feel like? What is that?
I believe it hurts.
Terrible.
It is.
Joint inflammation.
It'd be gout. Ouch.
We can talk about that after the meeting.
You said it like three times. I'm trying not to laugh. Gout.
But don't go to it, because you don't want to get it.
I'm not going to go to it at all. Thanks, Dave.
Since you asked that question, there's a strong possibility.
No, gout don't run around me. I'm good.
None of us, none of us, but, yes, ma'am. But gout happens.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple constituents reach out about the yard waste curbside pickup and the drop site, and kind of when those time periods are for closing. Can you, somebody speak to that, and whether or not there's an opportunity for the drop site to remain open, considering weather conditions?
All right, that's with Sheila, I believe.
Sheila Stephan, Public Works Coordinator. Based on comments from our sanitation director regarding the yard waste, at this point in time, it's the issue with the leaves that stick due to the temperatures falling. So if people put yard waste in their carts, if they go to dump those in the hopper, because of the falling temperatures, the, the leaves will stick in the containers. So unfortunately, they don't all dump, which ends up causing more phone calls into the sanitation department. So there are issues with trying to keep, not necessarily snow, but just lowering temperatures with the, the leaves. Hence, the reason the yard waste will be ceasing. As far as keeping the site open, I think the sanitation department will be looking at that to see if we can do so. We'll probably be reaching out to Tara and see what we can do to post if we're able to do that, and I can let the council know what that, the extended timeframe may be.
Okay. So just to clarify, it's the, the curbside pickup, so where the truck comes out to your house and picks up yard waste, that'll be ending this week because of the weather-related conditions, but the drop site will still be open?
Yes, and I can verify what those dates and timeframes will be and what the sanitation director has decided.
Okay. And I just, I got an email that said, yard waste compost site, we generally close this on November 30th. However, if the weather remains nice, we have been known to extend it until snow, snow happens. We close the site for four months so we can process the material that has been collected all year. It's very hard to do that in the open season due to traffic and space limitations, but we do operate it during the year also. With the volume we collect, we try to process it right after the site closes, so we can put the material into a static pile and let the microorganisms do what they need to do all winter long, so it is ready for the spring. There is a process which takes a few months to generate that compost site, so on that portion of it.
Correct.
It's a little bit of static piles, and you got to let the microorganisms do their thing. You should know that of all people, doctor.
Just got to make sure everybody knows.
So, so they'll take a look, and it's raining now, and that temperature's changed really quickly.
Yes, yes.
So we'll communicate the changes, so.
Microweather.
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 There we go. All right, yes, sir.
I had a couple requests for some citizens about the Rough Road, and they, they, they mentioned Broadway Street. But they also, we had conversations about when the winter happens and the roads start to buckle from changes of temperature. Is that, is there, is there a, a list that you go through? Is it just by, I mean, is there somebody that could tell me how that works so I can tell the people that call me that we've got a list of buckled roads? I know you great, you can grind them down, is that correct? Is that something we do?
Jamie.
And if there's a list, just so I can give them an idea of...
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. The bumps you're referring to, they're frost heaves. Usually, that's a problem with the underlying pavement. Public Works goes out and grinds those off as they get complaints, I believe. We, I look at it for overlays and reconstructions and things like that, but that's a longer-term solution. You know, that's four, five years, six years out is what I'm looking at, but Public Works will come out and do that. They just need to get ahold of Public Works to let them know where theirs are at.
And so that, there's already been some frost issues with the buckling of the pavement. And so that there's already been some frost issues with the buckling of the pavement or the bumps they're talking about now are, are current?
Yeah, should be. There's some of those, some of them can be heat blowups that were left from the summer and they just haven't settled back down yet.
But it's just basically based on complaints, not a list that you have compiled somewhere that you go down?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll just have them call. Thank you.
Said you had another one.
I forgot what it was already.
And Jamie, Broadway Street, for example, was mentioned. Just really quickly, an update on all of Broadway because they used to be a pothole row, but.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, yeah, you want to talk about roads that had speed bumps on all, on it all the way along there. We've completed the three and a half miles of reconstruction. We won't be able to accept that job till spring after they get back out there to finish up the seating. Paving's done, road's open, everything's ready to go on that. Staff and I met today. We're looking at doing the next piece of Broadway. We're designing it this winter from Donald down to Burton. So that'll be coming back to council after the first of the year to go out to bid for that. So we'll be doing another section of that, so.
Update on the.
On, on, on the Port Road from Shawless to the KOA. I, I left a little over a week ago and it doesn't look like anything's changed since I left.
Yeah, again, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, yeah, the, they're out there paving, or the paving's done. They're out there trying to get some of the grading finished up and, and the shouldering done, the median's done, the painting. The rain hasn't been exactly helping. Right now, they are looking at getting from the notes for the meeting today, they're looking at probably the first week in December to be opening that piece up and then closing it from the KOA campground up to Bop Street and starting work on that. Then that first week in December, weather permitting here, so.
Okay, that, yeah, that's, thank you.
Jamie, lastly, Park Avenue because.
The bridge is open. Right now, again, we've got temporary railings up along Park Avenue because again, as I mentioned before, the, the railings are due to be manufactured and sent here first quarter of next year. So hopefully, February, somewhere in there, we'll be getting the railings installed and then we'll be able to open that up. And again, they've started paving on 11th Street, they've started paving on the north side, the road back. Again, if the weather cooperates, they're still hoping to get that paved and then being able to open that up to vehicular traffic yet this year.
All right, thank you, sir. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more thing. Would the chief be able to talk about kind of some of those flyers that are going about, because I have been getting some calls about those? Could you just kind of let everyone know the update that you sent us or what you can share?
Rob Duncan, Chief of Police. So we worked pretty hard on it right after it happened, trying to identify who the people were. We've identified a few people. Working with county attorney, who was working with Attorney General, got the FBI involved as well. Trying to come up with a game plan on how to deal with these folks and if there's going to be any charges. Really can't dig into too much of the details of the case because it's still ongoing, but we're working hard on it.
If anyone does receive like flyers or anything, what, what should they do?
Let us know so we know where it came from and then, especially if they have any video out there or pictures that we can get ahold of to try to identify these folks.
What's the non-emergency number?
291-2515. That'll get you the dispatch.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bills payment in the amount for November 12th, amount of $5,398,217.86 and for November 18th in the amount of 600, sorry, $6,696,312.83.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think we have Ms. Latoya Hall in the audience. Would you please stand? All right, Mrs. Hall has been selected for the new housing coordinator in our Housing Authority Department. So we are looking forward to you just jumping right in and being part of the family. So I know from your past experience in professional life that you're going to do an incredible job in this capacity. And so we look forward to seeing the great work you're going to do. So thank you for joining us. All right, and we, do we have Lindsey McEnany here? All right, for renewal to our Main Street Board as well. So thank you so much. All right. So do two through. Well, one is something else. One is demolition.
Two through eight are all the same.
Two through, two through eight, and then we'll do nine and 10. So you take two through eight. So could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file, receive and file proof publication of notice public hearing, and that's for the demolition and site clearance services. Contract number D dash two, 2024 dash 10 dash 02P.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment about demolition and site clearance services? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer them to the Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Our estimate was $400,000. We had four bids. The first one was Midwest Demolition Contractors of Walford, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $646,220. Second bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $516,274. Our third bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $468,000. And then our final bidder was DW Zinzer Company of Walford, Iowa. They provided 5% security and their bid amount was $339,900.
All right, and it's welcome music to all of our ears for the St. Mary's site. So really want to give a shout out to Rudy and Community Development for all their efforts as well and their dollars to get this done. So very much appreciated to everyone on the team to get us to this point. So we want those bids back as soon as we can get them. So get those done. So number, can we take number two through eight and we'll open up the hearings for those?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file, approve a publication, notice of public hearing, amendment to the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan, amendment to the East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. Amendment to the Martin Road Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. Amendment to the Northeast Industrial Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. An amendment to the Rath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. An amendment to the University Avenue Area Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. An amendment to the Downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second to open up the hearings on items two through eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, is there anyone that'd like to speak to these items?
David Deans with JSA Development, 215 East Fourth Street. I realize that these amendments are fairly, seem pretty perfunctory, something that happens probably about this time every year. I don't know if you've taken the time to go through this, but it looks like that you've got 122.5 million dollar increase in future spending from these amendments that you've got here spread across different of the TIF districts. I'm not here to necessarily speak to that increase. I think it's something that you as council members, if I were you, I would want to know. I would also want to know and understand the, how the spending spreads over the years. I didn't see that from the material that I had available to me publicly. Perhaps you have that information available to you. The only item specifically that I wanted to speak to was the upcoming move of City Hall to the, I'll call it the old Courier Building as opposed to the old, old Courier Building. The one on the east side of the river, great, sounds like a good plan. My only concern is the fact that there's four and a half million dollars set aside the downtown TIF budget, this thing that you're adopting tonight, which is intended to be used for interior remodeling of the building. I understand that you're going to have to do interior remodeling. However, it does seem that it's something that benefits the entire city and therefore should not be put on the backs of the downtown property owners specifically. If you look closer at that line in the downtown TIF budget, I think there's 6.2 million, which is part of the redevelopment of this site as well as your annex building. And there's four and a half million dollars that's dedicated for remodeling inside the building. Again, all necessary, I'm sure, given the move. It's just that it's something that should be borne by the entire city because it benefits the entire city rather than just the downtown property owners. The other thing I would say about that is, you know, we did not say anything. I didn't come here when our tax bills went up by 31% from last year to this year. We're happy to pay taxes to receive better services. That's something that we expect. However, if we're going to have a downtown TIF, those funds should be spent on projects to increase the taxable base of downtown. And remodeling of the interior of City Hall does not meet that qualification. So I would ask you to find other sources to pay for that remodeling of the interior of City Hall and use those four and a half million dollars for downtown projects that increase taxable value. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
David Drath, 3145 West Fourth Street. I looked farther into the council packet. I don't see anything about this increasing the size of the TIFs. So are these TIFs going to just stay the same they are or every time we see this come about, it seems like they have to increase the size of the TIF? That just puts more area in a TIF program which does not benefit the coffers of the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No conversations about expanding TIFs and then also from the previous comments as well. What, I'm, is there anyone else that would like, I'm sorry, is there anyone else that wants to comment during this hearing going a second time? Let's close out, then you can come back.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming the previous determination of an area of the city, a city to be economic development area determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare designated said area as an appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Noel, before we get to the council members' questions.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So for the first, you know, the urban renewal plans themselves, everything listed in the plans is put in there just like it's described as a plan. So that's an option that we have to move ahead. Everything, every project, every expenditure that we do in there, we'll have to come back through to the council through a specific project or something like that. So the, the project of the City Hall swap of buildings to redevelop these sites and all that. During the budget process, the city council could choose to repay those bonds with the debt service levy instead of the downtown TIF. By including it in the urban renewal plan, we leave ourselves open with options as to how, which way we want to move ahead with that as we get closer to the budget. So everything in the urban renewal plans for projects that we, we raise the expenditures on is because we anticipate needing to either acquire or demolish in some of them or do some more road construction. So we increase those amounts as potential projects that are coming. But again, as a council, we'll have to come back through with Jamie designing it with a rise road or something and have you approve that specifically for a road extension or a sewer extension or an acquisition demolition or something like that. So they're just the plans that's putting forth our options out there. So we have those options for the future development. In terms of expansions, I don't think we have any expansions in the TIF areas at this time. There are two areas in the San Marnon where we have some new projects that we are resetting. So we'll take them out of the plan, put them right back in to reset the number of years we have in there to help us to repay some of the debt that we have incurred and therefore infrastructure extensions and things of that nature. But we're not actually expanding any of the TIF districts by area with the actions tonight.
All right, thank you. Council, I know we have some questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
The reuse of City Hall will also, and the annex building, will also benefit the downtown area as far as attracting another usage for these buildings, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the overall project is essential for, you know, for us to move into the new building and then to open these buildings up for private redevelopment with Mr. Blackwell. So it's all, you know, it's a, it's a large project that has a lot of moving parts to it, that they're all essential to each other. Obviously, we think the presence of, of the, the city employees, the improved conditions, you know, closer to, to Fourth Street will also help maybe improve some, some interactions with other businesses, but also the redevelopment of these sites will be huge.
Other questions? All right, madam, uh, no. Madam Clerk?
Is this just on number two?
This is on.
Two to eight.
Two through eight.
Okay. Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go. You want to do both at the same time or just one?
We can do both at the same time.
Oh, yeah, sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to prove, a motion to prove, a motion to receive file proof publication notice of public hearing amendment number seven to the San Marnon Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to remove properties from the TIF area. And amendment number eight to the San Marnon Urban Renewal Redevelopment Plan to expand the boundaries and update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates of the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on item nine and 10?
David Drath, 3145 West Fourth Street. I see that it says here to remove properties from the TIF area on number nine and it says to expand the boundaries. So therefore, one of these is going to remove and one is going to expand. That tells me we're going to have more TIF area in a certain area. Is that not true? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to comment?
Just for clarification, David Deans, 922 Mulberry Street, speaking on my personal behalf, not the company's behalf at this point. How long will this reset this TIF district for?
You got a second or third question? It's not back and forth, so I just.
I, I get that. My only other comment was is I think my earlier comments were misconstrued. So I'll just leave it at that.
All right. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. When we reset a property into the TIF district, so when it says expansion, it's because since we're taking them back out, then technically we're expanding the remaining TIF district to put them back in, but it's not going up in acreage at all or anything like that. And it will add a 20-year timeframe onto the TIF district for those properties. Obviously, we always have the ability to release funds earlier. We will have a large amount of the San Marnon TIF district coming out in 2026 or 2027. So again, we're, we're doing this so we can ensure to continue to have funds out there for the development of the South Waterloo Business Park.
Any of it?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming the previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area determined that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety and welfare designated said area as necessary in the interest, as appropriate, an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
There you go, thank you. It's all running together here on me.
All right, Madam Clerk. Well, council, council, you have questions?
All right, um, Madam Clerk, well, council, council, you have questions. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance providing the general property tax levied and collected each year on all property located within newly described San Marnon Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan in the City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School Districts and other testing districts to be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies and advance to the, to an indebtedness including bonds issued to be, or to be issued incurred by the monies advanced, uh, that is, that said the City of Waterloo connection with the urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take, um, uh, first three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution of City of Waterloo, Iowa authorizing official bank signatures. A resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Envision Architecture LLC of Waterloo, Iowa originally executed on June 20th, 2022 in the amount of $1,830 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Burns Aquatic Central Project and authorizing the mayor to execute that document. And a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $24,700 in conjunction with the Commercial Street Skywalk Repair Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with any questions on these three?
David Drath, 3145 West 4th Street. This is on number three. Uh, what's been done to date, so far being the street has been closed for quite a while. Is this paid for by the person that ran into it? Has any other engineering been paid already? This is a well-traveled street. Should it have been done by now? Because it seems like it's been closed for a long time already and now we're just getting to an engineering firm to, for $25,000 to see what needs to be done?
All right, thank you, sir.
Question?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Oh, Mrs.
Michelle Sweeney, AECOM Technical Services. Uh, we've actually already gone out there, um, inspected the site. Um, it does have some issues that are needing to be repaired. Uh, we do have some, um, site visits and, um, design that we are doing. We've already started pulling asbills and things like that. So we have started work without a contract, but we are going to get after this quickly and get this opened up as soon as possible. And the payment, I believe, is going to be through the insurance, but that's gonna be through kind of the city, so I'll let you guys...
Would you consider this an emergency repair?
Yes.
And what's the reason why it's blocked in that area?
So it's blocked because when the vehicle struck the bridge, it actually pushed out the glass windows, so the windows are no longer properly set in there. So as a precaution, we are closing it just in case, uh, for whatever reason, they were to have like high winds or something fall. So right now, that is why it's closed out of precaution.
So it's safety over convenient?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, council, any questions, sir?
I have a question for Michelle. Michelle, I have a question. Uh, are, are, do you have a structural engineer on staff or you're bringing one in?
It's actually gonna be an architect.
Okay.
So, but yes, we've had structural engineers already looking at it too.
All right. So the same thing happened over, across one block over?
Yeah, so we are actually doing that project as well.
So was there, was there any opportunity for us to, to merge the two projects and try to, try to save some money with, with the amount of people coming in?
That is actually something that we've already kind of requested and asked, um, to, uh, cause it is similar work. Um, uh, that is going to be up between the county and the, uh, city to see if they're open to that. Uh, they do have to run them, I'm assuming through the same insurance company for the same company, so you could potentially do that, but it's two different organizations paying for engineering, so they'll still have their own, uh, different costs. So we already have our contract with the county, uh, but that's something that I'm more than happy to discuss letting it as one project and proceeding that way.
And that's the only reason I asked because I thought since they're pretty much the same projects.
Yeah, it is a little bit different. Um, the materials are different.
Right.
Um, for the two different bridges, so it is a little bit different in the fact that you're gonna be dealing with different product materials. Uh, they don't have any window damage. Theirs is more surface where yours is actually structural and the fact that you have to reset those windows and, um, do the timbers and things like that. So it is a little bit different. It's not completely the same type of work.
I just find it odd that, that the operator of that vehicle could hit one of those and then not lower those forks to hit a second one.
Yeah, so he hit the, what happened is he hit the, um, jail skywalk first, which is a higher structure. So that was more of a cosmetic, um, just more of a grazing. And then he, he did a number on the other structure, which was lower, and so it did substantially more damage, so.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So in clarification, do we have, do we know if this is going through insurance? It's not coming out of the city coffer, correct? Is that up for debate or is that already a determined factor?
I believe that is the intent. I, I can't speak for the insurance companies that are gonna have to decide that, um, but I think that is the intent. Bridget's nodding yes, so.
But there has to be, it's been how many weeks ago? I think we would have had some idea by now if it's going through insurance, if the person that hit it has insurance, if it... I don't, I don't know enough about it. Was it a, a county vehicle? Was a company vehicle?
It was a private, um...
Okay.
Trucking company that, I don't wanna throw anybody into the bus.
And we don't, and I'm not asking that. I, I guess I just wanna know if, if it's been filed through their insurance.
Yes, I think there was a police report and everything. They've got it on video, so I don't know that there's going to be any leg for them to stand on to contest it, cause it's pretty well documented for both situations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
But we're not, we're not waiting for the insurance company since it's considered emergency repair. Well, I take it we're gonna repair it and then go after down the...
By the way, you asked for the emergency. Got you.
All right. We ready, council?
Oh, yeah.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, is there anyone else? Council, I know we have some questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
The reuse of City Hall will also, and, and the annex building will, will also benefit the downtown area as far as attracting a, a, another usage for these buildings, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the overall project is essential for, you know, for us to move into the new building and then to open these buildings up for private redevelopment, um, with Mr. Blackwell. So it's all, you know, it's a, it's a large project that has a lot of moving parts to it that they're all essential to each other. Obviously, we think the presence of, of the, the city employees, the, the improved conditions, um, you know, closer to, to 4th Street will also help maybe improve some, some interactions with other businesses, but also the redevelopment of these sites will be huge.
All right. Other questions? All right, madam? Uh, no. No. Um, Madam Clerk?
Is this just on number two?
This is on...
Two to eight.
Two to eight.
Okay. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director.
When we reset, um, a property into the TIP district, so when it says expansion, it's because since we're taking them back out, then technically we're expanding the remaining TIP district to put them back in, but it's not going up in acreage at all or anything like that. And it will add a 20-year timeframe, um, onto the TIP district for those properties. Obviously, we always have the ability to release funds earlier. We will have a large amount of the San Marnon TIP district coming out in 2026 or 2027. Um, so again, we're, we're doing this so we can ensure to continue to have funds out there for the development of the South Waterloo Business Park.
All right. Any...
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director.
When we reset, um, a property into the TIP district, so when it says expansion, it's because since we're taking them back out, then technically we're expanding the remaining TIP district to put them back in, but it's not going up in acreage at all or anything like that. And it will add a 20-year timeframe, um, onto the TIP district for those properties. Obviously, we always have the ability to release funds earlier. We will have a large amount of the San Marnon TIP district coming out in 2026 or 2027. Um, so again, we're, we're doing this so we can ensure to continue to have funds out there for the development of the South Waterloo Business Park.
All right. Any...
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, questions on seven, eight, nine? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
What is the assessed, I, I know it's in here, but can you tell, tell us what the assessed value of the property currently is for number nine?
Mr. Anderson, can you, um, answer his question, but also at the same time, let the public know that may not be familiar with what's finally happening after all of these years?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I was trying to see if I had it in here with me. I think it's at about 750,000 right now. Um, so it's a, it's a, uh, 1.6 million dollar increase, um, in the taxable value. So this is the, uh, trying to think of what was the restaurant that was in there?
Brinkley's Lanning.
Brinkley's Lanning, Huckleberry, C-H-D.
Huckleberries, Huckleberry, sorry. Um, so that's the, uh, the Water Street building. It's being redeveloped into 26 housing units. Um, so we're, we're excited to see that move ahead. There were some images that were popping up on there of, of their plan improvements.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there any parking issues right there? I mean, I, I'm trying to picture that parking lot.
We do not believe, so they, they have parking on the, uh, the, the 5th Street and the 6th Street side, um, so they have over 50 stalls. There's no parking requirements in the C-3 district, but if there were, um, it would be two per unit, so it'd be 52 spaces and I, I believe they have 50 to 55 spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, do you have something?
Yes. Were there businesses in this, in this site? Were there businesses there? And if so, were there agreements made with them? I, I think there were like stylists, hairstylists?
Recent uses, there was. I, I think they're, they've been gone for a couple of years now or a little while anyway. Uh, there was a, yeah, hair beauty supply in there. There was a church using it.
Okay.
At times, and so, um, I, I don't recall in their, their latest drawings, they're just gonna have a small commercials space in the middle, um, that potentially the church or something could use, but otherwise it'll all be residential.
Thank you.
I have a question for Noel.
Sir.
So Mr. Anderson, uh, they're, they're applying for historic tax credits and we had this discussion earlier this afternoon. If they don't get their historic tax credits, is, is, is this, is this proceed?
I, I know it would greatly change their plans, yeah. I mean, at, at this point, they are definitely counting on the historic tax credits to come through for them to move ahead with the project.
Cause it's, it's a small portion of that building that's, that's registered for the historic because of, or anything to the west is not.
Correct, yeah. I mean, that, I know they've been in contact, their architect's been in contact with Shippo to, to work through that process.
And, and I would really like us to look at, at some of the, the, the grants that we, that we give. I mean, $290,000 for this, this project seems like a lot and then the tax incentives for 15 years. We, we, I think we need to revamp this and, and take a harder, harder look at it. I, I believe this is the same developer that we bought Parkview Gardens from. So, uh, I, I, I'd like to see something happen here, but, but I, I really like to see us look, really take a hard look at our incentives.
Yeah, and I would, I would probably, if Shippo is looking, they need those, they need those credits. So, yeah, they need them. Uh, we don't wanna give any indication to the state that we don't, that it's not needed for their support. So they need the support. This is a, um, a building right on our riverfront. Uh, for years, it has been metamorphosis of different things.
Yes. Were there businesses in this... in this site? Were there businesses there? And if so, were there agreements made with them? I think there were, like, stylists? Hair stylists?
Recent uses there was. I think they've been gone for a couple of years now, or a little while anyway. There was a, yeah, hair beauty supply in there. There was a church using it.
Okay.
At times, and so I don't recall in their latest drawings that they're just going to have a small commercials space in the middle that potentially the church or something could use, but otherwise it'll all be residential.
Thank you.
Question for Noel.
Sir?
So, Mr. Anderson, they're applying for historic tax credits, and we had this discussion earlier this afternoon. If they don't get their historic tax credits, does this proceed?
I know it would greatly change their plans, yeah. I mean, at this point, they are definitely counting on the historic tax credits to come through for them to move ahead with the project.
Because it's a small portion of that building that's registered for the historic because of... Anything to the west is not.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I know they've been in contact... Their architect's been in contact with SHPO to work through that process.
And I would really like us to look at some of the grants that we give. I mean, $290,000 for this project seems like a lot, and then the tax incentives for 15 years. We... I think we need to revamp this and take a harder look at it. I believe this is the same developer that we bought Parkview Gardens from. So I'd like to see something happen here, but I'd really like to see us look... really take a hard look at our incentives.
Yeah, and I would probably, if SHPO is looking, they need those... they need those credits. So, yeah, they need them. We don't want to give any indication to the state that we don't... that it's not needed for their support. So they need the support. This is a building right on our riverfront. For years, it has been metamorphosis of different things. It almost looks blighted. So a cleanup of this building, reuse of this building is greatly welcome. So we definitely want to make sure the state knows that we need all the support we can possibly get, and anything they're doing with the federal as well. Counsel, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll take 10 and 11 separate.
I'll take 10.
We'll take one at a time. We'll take number 10.
I'll take 10.
Okay, can I... Okay, go ahead, please, sir.
Sorry. "I move to adopt the following resolution approving a development agreement with Waterloo Crossroads Development LLC for the acquisition, demolition, and redevelopment of the Crossroads Mall area with over $20 million in improvements planned for the redevelopment of the site and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents."
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. We... You have a question? But we have a short presentation. Noel, would you like to introduce our presenter, and then if the public has questions, you can ask after that, and then we'll go to counsel.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So you may have you... many of you may have had the privilege of going to the League of Cities when it was here in Waterloo. We had a development group there that was talking about how to redevelop malls, and so we do have Terry Lutz here today with us to talk about their plans for the Waterloo Crossroads Mall.
When he was here, he didn't know what he was getting himself into, huh?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate being here. We're really excited to hopefully move your mall project forward. And with me tonight is Michael Gahl, also with McClure Engineering Company. And I'm going to go through a brief presentation of what we've done in Fort Dodge and where that project stands, and maybe a real high overview of the opportunity that we see here in Waterloo. So with that, and feel free to jump in at any time if you want to stop and ask any questions. Again, my name is Terry Lutz.
Hey, Terry, the only thing I would ask is curve that microphone up a little bit so just in case it's a challenge for people to hear, but it actually...
Okay.
So...
Like that? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, where do we got going here? I could just push the button. That's not working either. All right. So, yeah, again, my name's Terry Lutz. I'm currently the chairman of McClure Engineering Company. We're a 260-person civil engineering firm headquartered in Des Moines. We have offices throughout Iowa, Missouri, and out on the East Coast and so forth. We're spread out kind of across the country. But we're a traditional civil engineering firm in a lot of ways. We do a lot of public infrastructure design of water, wastewater systems, roads, airports, like your local firms do just as well. We started a company several years ago called the ATI Group. D.J. Stokesbury has that group. He'd be here tonight, but he caught the flu yesterday, so he's sicker than a dog. And so he asked me to come alone tonight with Michael and give this presentation. But what we do as our development arm, again, these are two separate entities, although ATI is currently owned wholly by McClure. And what it does is allows us to bring engineering resources and land development expertise to projects just like your mall. So we're pretty excited about that. We're doing a lot of different land development projects around the state and actually now starting to do several around the country. So when we gave the presentation on what we were doing in Fort Dodge, and several of you were there, we're getting a lot of interest from our mall projects. We tend to take on projects that are a little unique, that are distressed, and we try to figure out a way to use public-private financing and put packages together that make sense, that we can help communities grow. So this is a quick presentation of Fort Dodge. At the top of this slide here was what Fort Dodge looked like, the mall there about five years ago, four years ago. It's a 31-acre site, and we purchased this mall finally with... from the NAMDAR Group, who also currently owns your mall. They own several malls around the Midwest. They're... Well, let's just say it took a while to negotiate the purchase of the mall in Fort Dodge, but we purchased this thing for about $4.5 million, and we estimated about $4.2 million, or $4.5 million, I should say, to demolish the mall and get the site ready for redevelopment. So we had a $9 million... This project was $9 million just to get started, and these projects take considerable public assistance and incentives to make them work. There's just so much upfront cost. It's almost impossible for a developer to take these on without a public-private partnership. So we went to the city of Fort... Well, and then we also estimated about $12 million of public infrastructure that would have to be built to facilitate the mall redevelopment. The lower picture here illustrates a high-level view of what our new vision of the mall was. I think this mall was about 300,000 square feet, all enclosed, much like your mall. We have gone through several iterations of the project design and came up with what you see down there below. You can Google Fort Dodge Corridor Plaza if you want to see more details of specifically what we're doing. But it's been a very fun project, taken a long time to get here. Again, we're about five or six years into the project. Total cost of around $21 million to redevelop the mall. And so when we went through the math and worked closely with the city, we identified $17 to $18 million of financial gap to make the project viable. And so that was our mission when we started this thing, is to work with the city and figure out how we could fill this gap. And because it was a very key part of real estate in the city, they were very willing to work with us and figure out a way to make this thing work. So what they did initially is they gave us $10 million upfront. I should say upfront. We had to purchase the mall and start developing the mall. As we incurred costs, our development agreement, much like yours, has us incurring costs, so we have to get a line of credit. We put our own capital at risk. We purchased the mall, and then we get reimbursed from the city. When we start these projects, there's no new Tiff that's created initially. And so we had to find outside sources with the city to help fund it, and they agreed to give $10 million of reimbursement. Now, we had a very tight development agreement that required us to do a lot of things. It's not like we just got $10 million and could walk away. We made some big commitments here. But they were also willing to give us another $8.2 million of Tiff if we were able to create enough new tax base to make the project work. So it was about an $18.2 million tax incentive package from the city. While we got into the project, the state came out with a $100 million sales tax reimbursement program, and we applied for some of that, and we were able to get about $17 million from the state. Now, we don't get that in cash upfront. We have to create enough sales tax over the next 20 years to generate, to get this $17 million reimbursed back to us. And so in our concept, we had all those items there listed as part of the things that we were trying to bring to the mall site when we started this, and most of these are currently happening. These are all underway in some phase or another. So together with those two projects, we had, again, about $18 million from the city and about $17 million from the state. The numbers are mind-boggling, I know. And actually, when we got into redeveloping the 300,000-square-foot mall itself, we scaled that down to 55,000 square feet, and then we went out and obtained tenants. We now have that mall fully leased. But unfortunately, in Fort Dodge, it... and it may be the same case here, you cannot afford to rebuild with new construction cost at a rate in which the market will pay enough rent to make it worthwhile. So when we went through the math on the mall itself, we came up with a $6.5 million gap. The rental rates that we were able to get from one of our core tenants was about a third of what market rate would be. But Fort Dodge wanted them as a tenant. They were a very important retail component to Fort Dodge. So the county actually stepped in and gave us $6.5 million of incentives to go get the mall built so we could start generating retail sales tax. And they will get paid their $6.5 million back from part of the $17 million that the state will reimburse us. So every public entity, of course, is getting paid back for the money that's being reinvested. We estimated it might take 12 to 15 years to get everybody paid back. The retail sales that are being generated are almost four times what we had forecasted. So it's been very, very positive. The mall, as I said, there is fully leased. I think all the... I think the mall actually opens in December, just before Christmas, and so all of that's going to be well underway. So it's been very successful from that standpoint. If we look at the overall impact of Fort Dodge, when we purchased the mall, it was paying $110... A 31-acre site, prime real estate, and Fort Dodge was paying $110,000 a year in property taxes. When we're finished, our estimate's about $2.1 million. We believe it's going to be higher than that now, but these are the numbers we forecasted when we started. So at $2 million a year, in 20 years, the city will get $40 million. In 30 years, you can see the numbers. A pretty substantial increase, not to mention it cleaned up a huge eyesore for the city. The sales tax impact that we forecasted, these numbers are very low compared to what's happening, but we forecasted this. It was currently paying about $112,000 a year. We think it'll generate about $1,003 in new sales tax. This is why the state liked the program so much and awarded us the $17 million. But in 20 years, we're estimating it'd be $30 million. I think it'll be well in excess of $30 million of new sales tax created for Fort Dodge. So very successful project. We're super excited. The picture... Yeah. And this is kind of where... Again, it's under construction. If you have a chance to go to Fort Dodge, I'd encourage you to go see it. What you're looking at on the far left is a five-court basketball indoor arena that'll be used for pickleball and other indoor sporting activities, and a restaurant, and an indoor-outdoor bar area that will kind of fit into the whole plaza area that's just to the north of it. And then you can see the other uses. The big piece there where we have Dunham Sports, they were the anchor tenant. They're the ones that are paying well below market. But that's the 55,000-square-foot mall that we are reskinning and repurposing that mall. And you can see the other uses we brought in. We brought in a Chick-fil-A, which in Fort Dodge is the first time. They're super, super excited about that, and brought in some other uses that the city hadn't seen before, so they're pretty excited. This is the plaza area that we created, and this is something that the state really liked, and so did the city. This doesn't produce any revenue, obviously, but to the left of that plaza that you're looking at is the basketball court arena, and it'll have garage doors that'll open up into that plaza space. And to the right of that is a hotel that we're working with to try to bring a hotel into that space. So this will probably be used for farmer's market and other outdoor activities. There's a small stage on the one end of this for entertainment events and so forth. Just to the back of this, which you can't see, but behind this picture, is where the retail component sits. So the whole purpose here is to activate the space to allow the retailers to be more successful and work... create more opportunities for people to engage and so forth in this location. Another shot here at night of what this will look like. Down in the lower part of this picture is a little water park... little splash pad for kids. There's a little fountain there that they can kind of climb around and do some other things. So we look at your mall, and we look at some of the things around here. At the top of the picture there in the middle is your mall site. Your mall's about 51 acres, I believe, versus the 31 in Fort Dodge, so it's almost twice as big. And you've got some nice amenities south of this, as you're aware, and to the west. So we're trying to say, okay, what can we do to maximize this entire location of the city? How can we tie these together? And we know that you're improving the one road there to the east that goes to the south, so we see all of this kind of working together. At this point, obviously, it's early in the game. We do have the mall under contract. We are looking to close, I think, in January or February, I believe. So we've achieved a purchase agreement from NAMDAR, and assuming that we get this thing purchased and closed, we'll move forward with it. Our goal would be to start, hopefully, doing demolition and starting to clear some of the site next summer, and then start moving forward. I don't want to get anybody's expectations out of line. These things take a long time. In Fort Dodge, we had to sit on the mall for almost two years to allow existing tenants' leases to run out, and I don't believe we have that issue here. So we might be able to move this project a little farther, but by the time you start to advertise this and go try to find tenants, and we've had some of that conversation already, it just takes time. And I would not be surprised if we're here five years from now talking about, hey, we're just finishing up the mall. We hope it goes a lot faster than that. I'm not sure how much time I have left doing this stuff, but anyway, it does take a lot of time. Prelimarily, we've laid out some concepts here on how to redevelop the site. These are very high level. We're not at a point where we can share detail with you at this point, but our landscape team working behind me here has been working on some overriding concepts and so forth. So what you see here is a mixed use of buildings. To the right of this picture is we see an opportunity for apartments, housing, some multi-use housing. More in the middle is kind of a plaza concept with retail. Down on the lower-left side would be potential for a big-box retailer, and up on the very top part of this picture would be some smaller retail boxes that we think would be very... a very good location for some of those. So you can see the housing component. These are some just visual pictures of what we kind of would see, maybe more two- or three-, four-story-type apartments, trying to create kind of a more of a, I'll call it, a cozy, warm environment for housing, kind of a work, live, and play type of environment, next to the retail components, some ideas there. Then the gathering spaces, we're calling these, where the park-type atmosphere. We've kicked around like a dog park type of thing, and just places where people want to hang out when the weather's good and take advantage of the retail that we might be able to bring back to the site. We've got some actor... active entertainment. We're kicking around ideas like pickleball, maybe some kind of an indoor-outdoor facility. We do not want to compete with what's already here in town, and we've had very preliminary conversations with city staff on what some of those things might be, but we've got a lot more work to do on defining some of those. And then more passive recreation areas where you can just go kind of hang out, kick a ball around, throw a ball, bring your pets out, and so forth. So with all of that, that's a real high-level view, and the development agreement that's on your agenda tonight is a big part of moving this project forward. If you so approve it, we're very excited to be part of the community and take this project and hopefully move it forward as successful as we have the Fort Dodge project. And I'll take any questions if you've got any.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions right now before we go to counsel? All right, counsel? Right. Just want to make sure that I mention that part of our 2030 Vision Plan includes Crossroads Double Down, which is what the broad-based community was looking for, and which is me being tagged on Facebook and Instagram for the empty mall pictures once a day. So if there's no other questions, sir?
Just had a question. I know, you know, community input is always really important. Are there plans to have, you know, community, you know, questionnaire sessions, input sessions as relates to this project as it moves forwards, no matter when that is?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, we would welcome an opportunity to sit down with city staff, counsel, and whoever else you would like to have engaged in this. We don't have all the answers, so we're willing and eager to hear input from the community in terms of what this site could be. It's a beautiful piece of property, and we believe if we get enough good ideas, we can really make something happen. So we would welcome a workshop or two of that type.
We had conversations also with Tavison Experience Waterloo for the destination portion of it as well, and I'm pretty sure they would love to be engaged in this part of the process to help lead the discussion about what people are looking for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just add, I made a comment a few meetings ago, I believe, about families that were coming in as far... from as far as Memphis, Memphis, Tennessee, to the Lost Island Bean Park and the water place, the water resort, and they were really concerned that there wasn't a shopping mall around. So to have something there is imperative. So, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we're finding... You know, actually, retail right now is fairly strong. Big-box retail... or, excuse me, malls are a thing of the past, but people still want retail. Retail is a form of entertainment, and when you can put the two together, along with housing, we can create a lot of synergy, and that's what we hope to bring here.
Is that called retail therapy?
That's what my wife would call it, I can tell you.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
There's one entity, not on that map, that I want to acknowledge, and that's Hawkeye Community College, and that is attracting students from across the world, and them coming to see a new renovated mall area next to a bean park and a water park, they will have such an impression of Iowa that will just reflect back to their home country and get more people to move to our community. So let's not forget about the importance of that community college and all the work it's doing to bring people here as well.
That's great.
Do we note it? Thank you. All right. Historic day. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
And thank you so much. Thank you for being here, too, Terry and partner. We appreciate it. And I would beg to guess who wants to take this item?
I'd like to adopt a resolution to declare a moratorium on the issuance of a special permit or variance for hobby farms in city Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Second.
Second. I want that second.
That motion has been made with the second, a strong second from John, and a third as well. But, Mr. Bozen, you want to just elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, I... Council liaison and planning and zoning, I attend all the Board of Adjustments meetings, and we have issues with urban animal hobby farms, and I really would appreciate it if... And what I'd like to see happen is us to tighten up the ordinance. There's a lot of... a number of issues that are slipping by, in no fault of our own, but they happen to slip by. I'm willing to work on a core group of stakeholders that want to work on this, but I'd like to see Blackhawk County Health Department, Humane Society, code enforcement, possibly the Iowa State Extension Service, planning and... someone from planning and zoning.
Eric Schrader.
Eric's here representing them, and I appreciate that. So it's only for six months, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and it could come back sooner if we come back with a finished product that meets our needs. Right now, if we issue an urban animal hobby farm permit through planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustments, there's a number of issues that's required in there, but we don't have a system in place to go out there and follow up that they've actually finished those issues. You know, we don't have anything in here what they do with dead animals. We don't have anything that... There are just so many variables in here that need to be tightened up, and I appreciate the council's support to set this moratorium for six months, but I really think that we need to get working on it right away.
All right, so to six-month moratorium with the hope to be done sooner than that. But on this vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take the last ordinance, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Move to adopt... I move to receive and file, consider, and pass for the first time the ordinance, amending the city of Waterloo ordinances by repealing Section 4 of Section 5.82 entitled Truck Traffic Prohibited on Certain Streets and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 4 of Section 5.82 Truck Traffic Prohibited on Certain Streets.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on this? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.
Goodbye.